I call this meeting of the Upshur County Commission to order. We will begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Jackie is going to read the minutes from our meeting two weeks ago. Since we did not have a meeting on that Thursday.
Good morning. The County Commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the Courthouse Annex on Thursday, September 3, 2015, at 9:00 a.m. J.C. Raferty called the meeting to order. Present were J.C. Raferty, Commissioner, Troy Brady, Commissioner, Terry Cutright, Commissioner, Carrie Wallace, County Administrator, Tabitha Perry, Assistant County Administrator, and Jacqueline Denkbocker, Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. On motion by Troy Brady, second by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of August 27, 2015, with the following correction. An application was received from one of the property owners four days after the deadline recommending the name Ball Haller Road. Ms. Bennett advised that the road name request did not meet guideline requirements and recommended that the Commission choose the name. She suggested Axe Drive, Ava Drive, or Ayton Drive as alternate choices. After discussion, on motion by Terry Cutright, second by Troy Brady, the Commission approved Ball Haller Road as submitted by Cody Ball for private driveway located off of Stansum Hollow Road. J.C. Raferty recommended postponing Agenda Items 1 and 2 until after 9:45 a.m. appointment with John Buck Edwards. J.C. Raferty reviewed the resolution declaring September 13 through September 19, 2015, as Religious Freedom Week in Upshur County. After discussion, on motion by Troy Brady, second by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved and authorized the Commission to sign the resolution. J.C. Raferty reviewed a letter of support, which will be included with the Buchanan River Watershed Association's application for funding through the Office of Surface Mining Reclamation Enforcement's Cooperative Agreement Program. If approved, the funds will be used for treatment of acidic mine drainage remediation appearance run. After discussion, on motion by Troy Brady, second by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the correspondence. Pamela Balch, West Virginia Wesleyan College President, and Robert Skinner, West Virginia Wesleyan College Vice President for Advancement, appeared before the Commission and provided the background information concerning the establishment of the college. WVWC was established in 1890 and is celebrating its 125th anniversary. Mr. Skinner read a proclamation which designates September 3, 2015, through December 31, 2015, as WVWC Appreciation Day throughout Upshur County. After discussion, on motion by Troy Brady, second by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved and authorized the Commission to sign the proclamation. Commissioners express their appreciation for the college and know its significance in keeping the community thriving. J.C. Raferty provided a review of the Coalition for Safe and Affordable Food Statement of Support. After discussion, on motion by Terry Cutright, second by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the statement, which expresses the Commission's support for establishing the FDA as the nation's single authority over use and labeling of products containing genetically modified ingredients. After discussion, on motion by Troy Brady, second by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the annual maintenance agreement for incident software in the Sheriff's Department with PTS solutions in the amount of $700 per year, effective September 15, 2015. After discussion, on motion by Troy Brady, second by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the grant contract agreement with and related documents for justice and community services, Justice Assistant Grant Award Project Number 15-JAG-032, in the amount of $20,000. The contract agreement is effective July 1, 2015, through June 30, 2016, and provides funding for the prevention resource officer at the Buchanan Upshur Middle School. After discussion, on motion by Troy Brady, second by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved the promotion of Sierra Warner from trainee status to full-time E-911 telecommunicator at her current rate of $11 per hour. After discussion, on motion by Terry Cutright, second by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the employment of Harley Squire as full-time Deputy Circuit Clerk at the rate of $9 per hour, effective September 21, 2015, as requested by Brian Coday, Circuit Clerk. Carrie Wallace provided an update concerning the request from David Godwin, prosecuting attorney, to re-advertise for the vacant legal assistant position. Ms. Wallace advised that in Agenda Item Number 10, the starting wage was incorrectly written as $11.75 per hour and should be revised to be stated as up to $11.75 per hour. After discussion, on motion by Troy Brady, second by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved the advertisement/job posting. Applicants must be received by closed business on September 21, 2015. After discussion, on motion by Terry Cutright, second by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the advertisement/job posting for the position of part-time fare fee clerk. Applications must be received by closed business on September 11, 2015. After discussion, on motion by Terry Cutright, second by Troy Brady, the Commission approved Cheyenne Marlin as volunteer for the Lewis Upshur Animal Control Facility. Carrie Wallace requested that Agenda Item Number 13 concerning the approval of commercial dog breeding operations documents be tabled and rescheduled for a future meeting pending establishment of ordinance. J.C. Raferty reviewed the following four-year information items. Revised Upshur County Sheriff's Financial Statement for period ending July 2015. Two, agendas and/or notice of meetings as listed. Three, meetings as listed. Four, meetings as listed. Five, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. Virginia Gallia, National Federation of Independent Business Representative, appeared before the Commission and provided a review/status report on the expansion of the Clean Water Act and its effect on small business and private landowners. Ms. Gallia reported that the expanded Environmental Protection Agency legislation requires landowners to obtain permits to do any kind of development or alteration to lands defined as wetlands and has broadened the definition to include any lands that collect water for as little as a few days per year. The legislation will have a significant impact on citizens by requiring costly permits and imposing exorbitant fines for noncompliance, even on private property. The NFIB wants to help the EPA accountable for violating federal law by bypassing analysis of the rules' impact on small business. Ms. Gallia is requesting citizens to sign a petition against the EPA, the EPA's expanded water rule authority. The petition can be found online at www.nfib.com/waters. John Buck Edwards, Office of Emergency Management Deputy Emergency Manager, appeared before the Commission and provided an update on the Hampton Island Hope River Access Project. Mr. Edwards advised that Dominion Resources is funding the project. David Frame, a guest of a West Virginia resident, has donated a parcel of land and the DNR is donating stone. Mr. Edwards has located a volunteer group to do brush clogging. Dominion Resources is planning a volunteer day, which will be announced in the near future. They will be constructing the ramp and parking lot. Jim Farrell, OEF Director, advised that the project will be completed in phases. After discussion, on motion by Terry Cutright, second by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the WVDODH-7 encroachment permit information forms and the Office of Land and Stream Activity Application for the Captain Abenhoe River Access Project. Carrie Wallace reviewed the road name request. After discussion, on motion by Troy Brady, second by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved Bio-Randy Lane for the private driveway located off of Smith Ave. for E-911 addressing and back for the sidewalks. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following settlements as listed. The Commission approved the following disbursements and/or refunds as listed. The Commission approved the following request to attend meetings as listed. The Commission recessed at 11:58 a.m. The Commission reconvened at 1:10 p.m. Steve Linger, E-911 Communications Center Director, appeared before the Commission to discuss the department's management matrix. On motion by Troy Brady, second by Terry Cutright, the Commission entered Executive Section at 1:10 p.m. Present were J.C. Raferty, Troy Brady, Terry Cutright, Carrie Wallace, Tabitha Perry, and Steve Linger. The Commission returned to open session at 2:48 p.m. No decisions were made in Executive Section. After discussion, on motion by Terry Cutright, second by Troy Brady, the Commission approved a motion to create a second supervisory position for the E-911 Communications Center under the direction/supervision of Steve Linger. The new supervisory position will be equal to and have the same responsibilities as the existing position. Interested current E-911 employees can apply for the position. Candidates will then be interviewed by Steve Linger and Carrie Wallace with a recommendation due for approval on September 24 during the regular meeting of the Upshur County Commission. After discussion, on motion by Troy Brady, second by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved Steve Linger's request to purchase a copy or fax machine from Valley Business Systems for the E-911 Communications Center. The total cost is $4,866, which includes installation, setup, and training. E-911 funds will be used for the purchase. Now for the business, on motion by J.C. Raferty, second by Terry Cutright, the Commission adjourned at 4:00 p.m.
Thank you, Jackie. I appreciate you reading that, those minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes as read? If not, I would request a motion to approve them. Is there such a motion?
Um, sir.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved. Today's schedule, we have three appointments at 9:15. We have Craig Kreiser, Agent for 4H Development Extension, Assistant Professor, Presentation of Proclamation for National 4H Week. At 9:30, we have Mary Albaugh, City of Cannon Council Member, who making several proclamation presentations to the Commission. At 10 o'clock, we have Carolyn Kreiser, who's regent with Elizabeth Zane, Chapter of Daughters of American Revolution, which will make a presentation on the proclamation. At 1 o'clock, we have a supervisor meeting for employees directly under responsibility of the County Commission. And at 2 o'clock, we have a policy board meeting for all elected officials. Well, it is now about one minute before Mr. Kreiser's presentation, so we'll move to our items for discussion, action, or approval. We have item number one, review and approval for the financing for Sheriff's vehicle, one of those vehicles. As you may recall, we've authorized purchase of three vehicles, one of which will be financed by the County Commission. It consists of a loan in the amount of $25,788, including $15 recording fee and $149 loan fee, with a interest of $2.69, and the payment will be over a period of three years. Do I have a motion to approve that purchase?
Stand by.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion has passed. It is now 9:15. I think we have Mr. Chris Kreiser here in the group. Craig, if you'd like to take the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As you know from time to time, I mean, we come and visit with you folks, and it sounds like you've got a busy day of proclamation signing. It's a beautiful day, and you're in here wearing ties and signing proclamations, so we'll try and keep this brief and let you get on with your penmanship and your signature. I'm here to ask the Commission to consider signing a proclamation declaring October 4 through 10, 2015, National 4H Week here in Upshur County. Every year, the first full week of October is generally held as National 4H Week in the United States, and we certainly like to take advantage of those promotional opportunities and an opportunity to celebrate what we're accomplishing with the 4H program in West Virginia and in fact... So if you'll indulge me, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation and ask you to sign afterwards, and then I also have a few very brief announcements that I'm going to hit you with while I'm already standing here. But the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas 4H is a community of young people learning citizenship, leadership, and life skills, and whereas 4H is one of the largest youth development organizations in West Virginia, with nearly one in every four West Virginia youth involved in 4H, and whereas 4H in Upshur County claims over 275 members and over 40 volunteers, and whereas 4H as a part of the Extension Service of West Virginia University is a program where youth learn through opportunities that provide them hands-on experiences in 4H's mission mandates of science, engineering, and technology, healthy living, and citizenship. And whereas 4H has connected youth and their communities with the innovative research and resources from our nation's 106 land-grant universities and colleges for more than 100 years. Now therefore, we, the members of the Upshur County Commission, do hereby proclaim October 4 through 10, 2015, as National 4H Week in Upshur County. We urge the people of this community to take advantage of the opportunity to become more aware of the special program that enhances our young people's interests and their futures as part of Upshur County 4H Development, and to join us in recognizing the unique partnership between our county and our state university system. Signed, Upshur County Commission.
Thank you. Any other comments you wanted to make?
I do, I just wanted to keep you abreast of things that are going on. We're having some small, we're doing a small celebration this year for National 4H Week. Unfortunately for us, National 4H Week also falls the week of Buchanan Upshur's homecoming, so we know better than to schedule a whole lot of events against homecoming events. So we will be celebrating on October 4, which is Sunday. Sunday afternoon, we'll be having a 4H Fun Fair at Jawon Park from 2 until 5 or 6 in the afternoon. And we're there at Jawon Park, and we're asking that each of our clubs be present and provide some form of either craft or educational fun thing. We'll have games, we'll bring in the, this means, these terms mean nothing to you, but we'll bring in knivesware and gaga from county camp. The gaga pit will be at Jawon Park. That's excitement enough right there. You say "gaga" to a 4H camper, and they're just, you can get them to do just about anything for you. But we'll have, we'll have those, some recreation activities, and we invite folks to come learn more about 4H in Upshur County. We'll have information about the different clubs and how to find a club in Upshur County, some schedules for upcoming events and things like that. So that's, that's October 4 from 2 to 5 at Jawon Park. The other thing I want to tell you, this is a historic moment. You folks are going to be the first to receive my new flyer. We're going to start, we're making a big push here in Upshur County, and I think this is going to start catching on in West Virginia, but other states are doing this already. We're going to create, we're hoping to create a number of what we're calling spin clubs or special interest clubs, 4H spin clubs. And the reason we're doing that is I'm not trying to replace the community clubs or the school clubs that we have and that have been very successful for us, but in today's world, it's becoming increasingly difficult to find volunteers for things, and especially volunteers who are willing to commit to a year-round, to offer a year-round commitment. So what a spin club would be is a group that meets for a minimum of six sessions, whether that's once a week, once a month, twice a week. We ask a volunteer to give us six sessions and share with youth something they're passionate about. So if you're, if you enjoy photography and would like to share your knowledge of photography with young folks, we ask, you get together, we'll form a spin club, a spin photography club. Or it could be fishing, or it could be building Legos, or it could be discussing Harry Potter books, or it could be woodworking. It could be just about anything. But if you've got a passion for a subject and are willing and able to share that with young people, we're going to, we're going to work to make that possible for you to do. So we're not asking, we're asking for, it's more, we're looking for kind of side volunteers rather than chronic volunteers, I guess, year-round volunteers. But we think that would fit into volunteer schedules a little bit more, but also open up a wide window of opportunities for our young people to experience a lot of things. You do not have to be a current 4H member to join a spin club. These will be open to any youth in Upshur County, and we'll make you a 4H member through this. So again, it's not to replace community clubs, it's to enhance the community club experience and provide even more opportunities for volunteers and helping make that connection with, between young people and caring adults.
Should the volunteer be volunteering for just one of the six sessions, or would that volunteer...
No, we would ask them to, we would ask them to provide six sessions. So if I would come and say, I like, I like to fish, I want to teach kids about fishing, that's been, that's one of my favorite examples. There was a spin club in Indiana that a guy just liked to fish, so he would take kids and have them meet at a different fishing hole once a week for six weeks, and when he got to the fishing hole, he would, the educational part kicked in with, this is what, this is the bait, this is, this is how you fish this type of hole, and this is why, what time, and where you look, and those kinds of things. So you'd have those kinds of educational opportunities, and then you spend the rest of your year, hour, hour and a half fishing, and making that, and just, and making the connection with young people. So we would ask them to commit to a minimum of six sessions. If it turns into something more, larger than that, that's wonderful, but all we're going to ask for initially is six sessions.
Right.
But I've got flyers for that.
I mean, first of all, is there a motion to approve the signature on the proclamation by the County Commission?
Stand by.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sounds good.
But yeah, we've got some, we're looking forward to another big year. Talked with Ms. Chapman at the middle school, she works with the, I'm assuming they still call it the gifted program at the middle school, and we're going to take our 4H robotics program to her classroom, and we're going to be working 4H robotics with some sixth, seventh, and eighth graders there. And what else do we have? We have all kinds of cool things happening, so I won't take up any more of your time, but yes. I do appreciate everything that the Commission provides for us as far as the Extension Service and the 4H program, and we look forward to coming back and telling you some more of the good things we're doing.
Thank you. We'll have the original and the copy. Thank you for your presentation.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, our next appointment is at 9:30. We have five minutes, so we'll then continue with our items for discussion. Correspondents, Rodney Rollinson, deputy sheriff, Upshur County Deputy Sheriff, requesting to be reappointed to serve on the Upshur County Enhanced Emergency Telephone Board for another three-year term effective July 1, 2015. Rodney Rollinson's new term would expire June 30, 2018. I have a motion to approve that request.
Stand by.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have a correspondent from Tabitha R. Perry, Assistant County Administrator, proposing to change the Upshur County Safe Structures and Sites Enforcement Board meeting from 4:30 p.m. to 4 o'clock p.m. on the second Thursday of each month. I have a motion to approve that change in the meeting schedule.
Stand by.
All in favor say aye. Motion carries. Next, we have approval of registration sign-in sheet according to West Virginia Code, Section 6-9A-3. Basically, it's a sign-in sheet which is maintained by the County Administrator. In the event someone wishes to speak before the Commission, they will sign that form. I have a motion to approve the use of that form in our meetings.
Stand by.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have approval of road name removal petition from Slater Lane, which is a driveway under Eco Road. If you've read the application form, the funding or the fees have been paid to remove, to remove that name, which is in essence a driveway off of Eco Road. Having read that and understood what the request was for, and it's apparently been approved by our mapping addressing coordinator, is there a motion to approve the removal of that name from the books?
Stand by.
All in favor say aye. Motion carries. Next, we have review and signature of commercial lease agreement by and between Q4 Holdings LLC and the Lewis Upshur Community Corrections, effective July 1, 2015. The installment payments will remain at $800 per month. That is a rental for a building on Spring Street, I believe, that is used for housing the offices for the Community Corrections. They've been there since about a year, two years?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the entering of the contract for that...
Stand by.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll have about two minutes, Bob. We've got to go by the clock.
Oh, it's too early yet.
We'll get to you.
We'll get to you in about a minute. Make hay while the session...
Okay.
We have a letter from Buck Edwards, Project Manager, Deputy Director, Emergency Manager, requesting cash contribution from the Upshur County Commission to help provide stone for the parking lot area where a boat ramp at the Hampton Island Hope Bridge. This is a presentation that was made, actually the presentation was made by Mr. Edwards and Mr., let's see, I have lost, Farrell. Farrell, they're too similar. Relative to a boat ramp, which will serve also a purpose of providing recreation, but beyond that also serve as a means by which we can use a boom to keep potential pollution, if that such an issue occurs, similar to what happened in Charleston, will be a position there to put that boom down to keep the water from being contaminated downstream where the river intake is used for civil, for potable water for the city of the Cam, its public service districts. So bearing that in mind, is there a motion to contribute money for purchase of the gravel stone for the parking area? And if that motion is to be made, what would the amount be by the...
Well, it is our property, and it's going to be a nice improvement to the property and a good service to the community.
Yeah, for additional information, I was at a meeting of the local Emergency Planning Commission over in Lewis County, which we share, Lewis Upshur, L-E-T-C. And Mr. Edwards indicated that approximately half of that funding, he estimated about $15,000 cost of poured concrete in for the ramp and everything, had already been secured, so we're down to about a $7,000 request. And L-E-T-C yesterday approved $2,000 of that funding toward that goal, so we're now down to about $5,000 that's needed for completion of that project. So bearing that in mind, is there a motion...
I'll make a motion that we contribute $1,000 toward that, but I don't think I'd like to hem him up till he has to use it to buy a rock with. I think we ought to give it to their judgment, they may need it somewhere else.
What was in his request was for providing stone.
Providing some $1,000.
That was in his request.
Okay.
Is there a second motion?
I will second that, and I think it will be an improvement to the Hampton. I think this Commission should make a... I think this commission should make a donation. And I'll second that.
Very good. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion does carry. It is now past nine, nine thirty. I'm sorry to say about one minute. So we have Bob Post, I believe, who's here. Mary Alba is.
She's not going to be able to make it, she was sick this morning.
Okay, would you like to make the presentation in her stead?
Do you have the resolution?
I do not. We may have that down here. Here's Morgan Perry, go on in, Morgan.
Just don't nod.
There's four proclamations. One deals with Labor Day, and a second is a day to remember. Community proclamation, American Legion Day.
You read it the last time.
Yeah, and the National P O W I A Recognition Day.
First, I'd like to recognize Morgan Perry and Miles Paul. Miles Paul was in both Korea and Vietnam and was a recipient of the Bronze Star. And Morgan, I believe, they talked about before when we were here.
Well, actually, Morgan, though, I think it was Ed Smith that was.
Oh, that's right, it was Ed.
Morgan was not here, I don't believe that time.
That's right. Morgan can tell you what his service was.
I had an inch on career in March nineteen, March of 1951, so there's a fifty-two, my late for fifty-two.
The proclamations are as follows: Labor Day, September 7. The American Legion recognizes the historic significance of Labor Day as an annual holiday to celebrate the economic and social contributions of workers to the strength, prosperity, and well-being of the country in the United States. Labor Day is a federal holiday observed on the first Monday of September. Labor Day has its origins in the labor union movement, specifically the eight-hour-day movement, which advocated eight hours for work, eight hours for recreation, and eight hours for rest. In the United States, the first Labor Day holiday was celebrated on Tuesday, September 5, 1882, in New York City. The idea spread with the growth of labor organizations, and in 1885, Labor Day was celebrated in many industrial centers of the country. Oregon was the first state to make itself a holiday on February 21, 1887. By the time it became a federal holiday in 1894, 30 states officially celebrated Labor Day.
Thank you, Bob. Well, I can tell you, all the proclamations are read, then we'll make a.
Yeah, then I give it to you for telling, okay? Proclamation, a day to remember. Whereas the unprovoked attacks of September 11, 2001, upon America by foreign terrorists have thrust the United States and other countries into a war it never envisioned, militarily or diplomatically. And whereas the challenges facing all civilized people of the world as they relate to the war on terrorism will not end until those responsibilities are eliminated or brought to justice. And whereas America is fully committed to ensuring our freedoms remain infettered and sovereign for all generations now and forever. And whereas world opinion needs to remain focused upon the eradication of these inhuman acts perpetuated around the globe. Whereas one way to accomplish this is to never forget that those innocent victims did not die in vain. Whereas America can fight back by reminding the world that the deaths of these people will always be remembered and that they will be forever loved. Whereas a noble and appropriate way to accomplish this is through the annual celebration of their living. And whereas the commemoration should be conducted each September 11 throughout the land to include the proclamation of global peace and goodwill, the demonstration of Americans' resolve and perseverance to win the war on terrorism, the advancement of responsibility, citizenship, encouragement of patriotism, and love of country, the pregnant remembrance of those innocent victims who died September 11 as heroes, one and all. Now therefore be resolved, as the president of the Upshur County Commission, I could, let's read this for you.
Certainly.
Now therefore be resolved, as the president of the Upshur County Commission, I am issuing this proclamation to memorialize the men and women and children who lost their lives. And be it further resolved that the proclamation be publicized for all to see and know that the citizens of Upshur County remember with eternal respect those whose lives were suddenly without cause and pointlessly taken from them on September 11, 2001. May they forever rest in peace and abide in our memories. Respectfully submitted and approved on the 17th day of September, 2015. The next proclamation. Community proclamation, the American Legion Day. Whereas the American Legion was chartered by Congress in 1919 on September 16 as a wartime veterans organization based on four pillars of Veterans Affairs, Rehabilitation, National Security, Americanism, and Children in Youth. Whereas over the years, the American Legion has become a permanent community service organization, which now numbers more than 2.5 million members, men and women, and over 14,000 American Legion posts worldwide, working a variety of programs that support the four pillars and behalf and benefit our nation's veterans, its service members, their families, and the youth of the country and its citizens. And whereas the members of the American Legion are dedicated to upholding the ideals of freedom, democracy, while working to make a difference in the lives of fellow Americans. Whereas the 2015 observance of the American Legion Day provides an opportunity to recognize legionnaires in our community for their many contributions to the community. Now therefore, I J C Drapity, President of the Upshur County Commission, do hereby proclaim September 16, 2015, as American Legion Day for Frank V. Bartlett, Post 7, Baccano, West Virginia. And the last, probably won't hurt anything. And the last is the National P O W M I A Recognition Day. For years, the American Legion supported the National P O W M I A Recognition Day, which is now recognized annually on the third Friday of September. This commemoration is set aside to honor the commitment and sacrifices made by the nation's prisoners of war and those who are missing in action, as well as their families. Until July 18, 1979, no commemoration was held to honor POWs and MIA's in the first year. Congress passed resolutions, and the national ceremony was held at the National Cathedral in Washington. The first technical squadron from Langley Air Force Base in Virginia flew the missing man formation. A poster was published by VA, which contained only the letters P O W M I A, but continued until 18, 1982, when a black and white drawing of a POW captivity was used to show urgency of the situation. Every year, National P O W M I A Recognition Day legislation was introduced until 1985, when Congress determined the commemorative days would no longer be considered. The president now signs a proclamation each year. The National League of Families proposed the third Friday of September as a commemoration date. Most of the National POWs and MIA's recognition day ceremonies have taken place at the Pentagon. Now they're held throughout the nation and around the world on military institutions, ships, schools, churches. The focus is to ensure that the American members remembers its responsibility to stand behind those who serve it and to make sure that we do all that is possible to account for those who have not returned. And just to note, the American Legion at each meeting has a ceremony for MIA and POWs. I think that's all.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate your presentation. Is there a motion to approve the proclamations related to Labor Day, September 7, a day to remember, community proclamation regarding the American Legion Day, and the National P O W slash missing in action and MIA Recognition Day? Is there such a motion?
A motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. We will sign those, and we'd be honored and humbled if you gentlemen would come up and have a photograph taken. I'm certain that Amanda would request that as well. Our next appointment is at 10 o'clock, about 15 minutes. We'll resume our items for discussion, action or approval. Establish time and date and time for trick-or-treat. City of the Canid will be approving Saturday, October 31, from 6 o'clock PM to 7:30 PM. The Moose will hold a trick-or-treat community event at John Bone Park on Saturday, October 31, from 7 o'clock to 9 o'clock PM. So is there a motion to have a similar timeframe for the county, or is there additional time to be made that date for county residents? What is the will of the commission? If there's a motion to be made?
I think there should be additional time in the county because it's a trick-or-treat, and if you live out in the county, it takes you a while to get from one location to another. It's not like the city. So with that being said, I would like to make a motion that we extend the time from 6 to at least 8 for 8:30.
I would say, there will, is there a timeframe that you have in mind?
I agree with that.
Okay, well, is it 8 or 8:30? I guess I asked that question.
That's why you're present, sir.
Well, I'll ask the motion, pick a time, both of, either 8 or 8:30, since that seems to be your pleasure.
At 8 o'clock, I'm afraid. How much will be?
Yeah, I'm thinking 8 o'clock for safety purposes. That'd be my consideration. But I'm not voting accepting the.
Well, we could make it, if you want to. But I'll concur with the commissioner, give a second, 6 to 8.
Okay, so is there a motion to establish the county trick-or-treat hours from 6 o'clock PM to 8 o'clock PM on Saturday, October 31 of this year?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Children in the county would be happy if they had. Thanks to F. L. R. to go on and some extra candy. We have correspondence from Darla Riffle announcing her resignation as tax deputy effective September 14, 2015. Is there a motion to accept that resignation?
A motion.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have approval of advertisement for full-time benefited position of tax deputy in the Upshur County Sheriff's Department, Tax Division. Applications must be received on it before they close the business on Friday, October 20, excuse me, October 2, 2015. Is there a motion to approve that advertisement?
A motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Evan C. Thomas announcing his resignation as Program Director of the 26th Judicial Circuit Community Corrections, effective at the close of business on September 24, 2015. Is there a motion to accept that resignation?
A motion.
All in favor, say aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Ashlyn Brooke Ware announcing her resignation as Case Manager for the 26th Judicial Circuit Community Corrections Program, effective September 11, 2015. Is there a motion to accept that resignation?
A motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. We have correspondence from Terry Joe Ben, addressing the mapping coordinator, requesting the employment of Amanda R. Ray as part-time administrative assistant at the starting wage of $9 per hour, effective September 21, 2015. Upon approval, Ms. Ray will work no more than 19 and 1/2 hours per week. Is there a motion to approve that hiring and recognition?
A motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have approval of Lewis Upsher Naval Control Facility volunteers, Catherine Riley, Elena Wright, Natalie Parkins, and Elaine Ashen. We have approval for them to serve as volunteers at the shelter.
A motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have approval of Office Emergency Manager volunteers, Matthew R. LaRusa and Ryan R. Raden. An approval for the use of those interns at the Office of Emergency Management.
A motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Still have 10 minutes before our next appointment, so we'll move down to items for information. We have correspondence from Paul A. Maddox, Jr., Public Engineer, Secretary of Transportation slash Commissioner of Highways, providing an update regarding a June 26, 2015 request for installation of intersection lighting at the intersection of Peasling Mill and Route 20, Peasling Mill Road and Route 33 in Upshur County. The Traffic Engineering Division has been asked to conduct a study at that intersection, and is anticipated that a review will require approximately 45 days to complete. Since you want to.
Actually, I wanted to ask for a copy of the letter, because I have a special order.
So this is not a constructive, we put them in just.
Two steps.
Yeah.
Another information item, we have correspondence from Tabitha Perry, Assistant County Administrator, to Paul Chapman regarding extension of a previously set deadline to bring his property located in Bankstown to comply with the state safe structures and sites ordinance. Make sure we.
You did not meet last week with the deadlines, so we expected that tonight.
You can have the center cards if you want to take that with you.
Okay, I'll take your.
Oh, no, no, either of us.
Okay.
You're welcome, sir.
Next, we have correspondence from the Kitting of the Mountain Lakes Preservation Alliance, Chris Hale with Friends of Water and Ann G. Rosser with the West Virginia Rivers Coalition in regards to Virginia Gallion's presentation conducted on September 3, 2015 during the regularly scheduled of the county commission meeting. His presentation was in regards to the expansion of the clean water rule. Next, we have correspondence from Mary Jo Thompson, Director of the Community Development Division of the West Virginia Development Office, regarding the submission of land and water conservation fund applications for 50% funding about recreation projects in the 2015 fiscal year funding cycle. Next, we have an Upshur County Family Resource Newsletter for September 2015. We have an Upshur County Extension Office Newsletter for September, October, 2015. We have a James W. Curti Public Library Newsletter for September 2015. We have a monthly dog report submitted by Seth Cutright, Naval Control Unit Maine Officer, August 1, 2015 through August 31, 2015. We have a cat report, August of 2015. We have a dog report from the Upshur Naval Control for August 2015. Building permits for August 2015. Atlantic Coast Pipeline Project update for September 2015. We have agendas and notices and meetings, we have meeting minutes, we have scheduled meetings. We have appointments needed for, or needed for upcoming vacancies for various boards, one for the Upshur County Fire Ward vacant position, needing a first district community representative, but I believe there's possibility that we have a volunteer for that position. And we have Source Water Project Committee, that's needed county representative, and must be a public service district member or employee. And tabled items, we have Upshur County Commercial Dog Breeding Operations, Upshur County Commercial Dog Breeder Permit Application, West Virginia Reader Diannual Checklist, that was tabled for immediate 9/3 of 2015. Is there any action taken on that since that time?
The problem is that, you know, when the West Virginia has passed this ordinance, somewhere it'd be starting from.
Right, that's right.
But, yes, so it's a nice big locker that I expect.
So they'll be holding the bank and spending legislation. Our next regular discussion meeting will be October 1, 2015, 9 o'clock. Attention is drawn that on the September 24 meeting. Attention, Mr. Arndt, that on the September twenty-fourth meeting, we will not be meeting at nine o'clock, rather we'll have a meeting at ten forty-five. We still have a few minutes, so until ten o'clock, when we have our D I R proclamation, we will prepare some bills. It's now ten o'clock, and we have Carolyn Kreuzer, Regent, Elizabeth Zane Chapter, Doctor's Mark Revolution, accompanied by other ladies of that organization, making a presentation of proclamation designating September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week.
So do we just come up there?
You can do that, or you can go to the podium, whichever.
And do your proclamation, then you can come up here.
Oh, okay.
However you want to do it.
Okay.
If you ladies would like to go stand by here, that's certainly permissible.
I'd have to hold her up.
Jerry can be an unofficial daughter of the American Legion. Whereas September seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen marks the two-hundred-and-twenty-eighth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize that magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation. And whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I J.C. Rafferty, President of the Upshur County Commission of West Virginia, do hereby proclaim September seventeenth through twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen to be Constitution Week in Upshur County, West Virginia, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven.
Thank you. I believe that it was Robert Byrd that also passed, or arranged to be passed, some legislation that children in East and West Virginia are to be instructed in the Constitution during this timeframe, I believe, history or civics classes.
This afternoon, our chapter will be delivering two hundred and twenty copies of the Constitution to Buchanan, Upshur High School.
Very good.
Over the senior class.
It's a firm wish that the students take the time. And any adults that they might have in their family, take the time to read that document.
Absolutely.
Well, I thank you. So is there a motion to approve the signature on the proclamation as presented?
Salute.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Please come forward, I'll sign it. And you ladies, like to have your photograph taken?
Oh, absolutely, always.
I believe now the only meetings we have left are one o'clock and two o'clock. There'll be supervisor meeting and a publicity board meeting, so we'll just continue to bang, bang our doors.